In the absence, temporary absence of our mayor, I'm going to call the city council meeting of November 15 to order. And may we have roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Plummer?
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Satch?
Here.
It appears as though Mayor Hawkins and Councilmember Garaventa are absent.
So, do we have any public comments for the, relative to the closed session we are going to adjourn into? Not seeing any. I will close public comment and go into closed session. Regrettably, our mayor is absent this evening, and as Mayor Protem, I'm going to lead the meeting. We had two items, I'm sorry. We had a conference with legal counsel and direction was given to staff, and then we will be reconvening for closed session after the regular city council meeting. I'm sorry. I apologize. So, we will be reconvening for a closed session after the regular city council meeting. And do I call to reconvene into open session? Okay, so we will now reconvene into open session. Pledge of allegiance. Anne, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Mary Rose, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Plummer?
Present.
Councilmember Garaventa?
Here.
Councilmember Sagerstrom?
Here.
And Councilmember Satch?
Here.
With Mayor Hawkins absent.
The city clerks' report on agenda posting?
The agenda was posted on Friday, November 12th at 12:00 PM.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I'm actually going to, staff is going to be requesting to pull item eight, which is consideration to adopt resolution 1115-2020B, and also to pull item 11, which is approve the creation of the City of Sonora Climate Action Committee. Pull those items for reconsideration at a future date.
Thank you. So approval of the agenda with the changes?
I move to, yeah, I move to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sounds unanimous. Any opposition? No. Passes four zero. With one absent. Public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to, ma, sorry. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute time presentation. So I wanted to give you this book. It's titled "The Dangerous Truth About Today's Marijuana" by Laura Stack. She's a mother of a 19-year-old boy who died by suicide. In reading this book, I learned about high THC cannabis and dabbing, things every parent, teacher, and policymaker should know about. Three days before he died, Johnny Stack told his mother, "Mom, I just wanted you to know you were right. You were right all along. You told me marijuana would hurt my brain. Marijuana has ruined my mind and my life. I'm sorry. I love you." Before the 1990s, THC content in marijuana was 3% to 5%. Today, through selective breeding, THC content can be in the 30% to 40% range. It's not like yesterday. Dabs, also known as shatter and wax, can contain up to 99% THC. Likewise, vaping cartridges can have up to 99% THC content. Edibles can contain up to 1,000 milligrams in a single candy bar. THC is proven to interfere with brain development. Research has shown human brains continue to develop until the mid to late 20s. Even one-time use of high THC pot during adolescence can permanently alter brain development and cause mental illness. Johnny Stack liked the feeling of being high, became a frequent user, became addicted, developed psychosis, and during a psychotic episode, ended his life. This book tells a compelling story, provides excellent research, exposes the addiction-for-profit industry, and has great ideas about government policy. I hope each of you will take the time to read this book. Thank you. Thank you. Have we any other public comment? Oh, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem and councilmembers. Katie Dunn, President of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. I want to give you a brief update on Christmas Town Sonora. A few, a couple Saturdays ago, we hung the lights on the Red Church and also in Courthouse Park. I'd like to give Mary Rose and Rochelle and Councilmember Anne Sagerstrom a huge shout-out of thanks because we had a little bit of a snafu and they were able to be available and we were able to hang the lights successfully. The big reveal will be on, on November 26th during our Christmas parade. The lights will come on after that every Friday, or every, not every Friday, but every night at 5:00, and they will go out at 6:00 AM. So that's the lights. I do want to share with you that we do have a website now. It's christmastownsonora.org. So we're moving fast and furious, and it's just a few weeks away. So unless you have any questions for me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Not seeing any other people leaping to speak to us, I will close public comment and go onto the consent calendar. Do we ask for public comment on this? Yep. So, is there any public comment? I'm sorry.
Usually you read it first.
Oh. We have two items. Approval of disbursements in the amount of $154,167.95 for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, holiday pay, and other adjustments. Item five, approve city council, city council minutes for June 21, 2021, July 6, 2021, and September 20, 2021. Any public council, uh, comment? Not seeing any, I bring it back to the council.
There's not any amendments. I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the carries unanimously. New business. Approve and intent to enter into an agreement with, for fire services between the Chicken Ranch Rancheria of Miwok Indians and the City of Sonora. Mary Rose?
Mayor Protem Plummer, councilmembers. This item is actually coming from both myself and your Fire Chief, Amy New. I'm going to start the item off. If she has anything to add, I would encourage her to say so. The item that's before you is an intent, intent to enter into an agreement for fire services between Chicken Rancheria of Miwok Indians and the City of Sonora. The intent is for staff, the ability to begin negotiations with the Chicken Rancheria Tribe to allow for a fee for service of fire personnel, of City of Sonora Fire Department personnel within the jurisdiction of the tribe, and allowing for that, those City of Sonora personnel to be within the fire station owned by the tribe. And as I detailed in the agenda report, any actual ownership of the fire station, the apparatuses, would be ownership of the tribe. This is merely just to begin negotiations, looking at particular personnel services. So we are, we're quite honored that the tribe is wanting to negotiate with the City of Sonora and looking at our fire services here within our small city, and allowing for expansion of City of Sonora services down to the Jamestown area. We believe it would be a great partnership on behalf of the city and the tribe. And at this time, if the chief would like to say any words?
That's Mr. Mayor Protem and members of the council, members of the public. I see that we do have tribal council here tonight, too, so thank you. First off, I just want to say how honored I am to bring this before you today. This is a milestone for the city. It's a great project for the county and a great partnership moving forward. This is going to add additional personnel on city staff and local jobs for firefighters in our community, so that's going to be huge moving forward. And I'm just proud to be able to help and assist with the project of building a fire station, helping them spec out any equipment that they're, they're looking at purchasing, and to build this relationship forward. So as I said, the tribal council members are here. I don't know if they wanted to come up and say anything, but I wanted to offer that opportunity as well.
I think that would be wonderful and probably illuminating. Thank you.
I'm the tribal chairman at Chicken Ranch Rancheria. Again, just really just echoing everything that Ms. New, Chief New said, it's really a privilege and a pleasure to be able to come forward and be able to start this negotiation, start working on this. It's really going to be a great benefit for us down there on our reservation, also in Jamestown, but I think it's a great, amazing partnership. This woman is amazing in her knowledge of fire industries through the roof, so we're really looking forward to this and be able to continue and start, start this partnership together with you guys. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think we speak for all of us when they were flattered that you would want to, and thank you very much. Any questions from the council? Thank you very much. And so...
Just to say it's a great opportunity.
Well, yeah, I think so. Any public comment? Not seeing any. I'd like to bring it back to the council. Any further comment from the council?
No, other than I think it's, it's a great, wonderful, going to be a great, wonderful partnership because it's going to help us, help our own fire department out, and it's going to provide great service down in, down around the casino as well as up here. It's more, more jobs and more training and, and a better opportunity to, for fire suppression and prevention. So I think it's great. And if no one else has anything, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the letter of intent to enter into agreement for fire services between the Chicken Ranch Rancheria of Miwok Indians and the City of Sonora.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you for approaching us. Like I say, we are very flattered and honored. Item seven, consideration to adopt resolution number 11-15-2021-A, approving the memorandum of understanding for the Sonora Police Officers Association, SPOA, effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Is it before you go on to the next item? I've been asked by council, and I noticed as well, that when you ask for ayes, you have to ask, you should ask for noes and abstentions as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to be safe.
I appreciate it. I'm pretty...
I know you kind of came into this at the last minute not knowing you were going to run the meeting, so.
True enough. Thank you. Do I need to call for the last vote again, or?
Just to confirm, everybody was an aye vote on the last one? No one was a no or abstention?
Aye.
So seeing none, then it would be fine to move on. So we're just going to say, we just go ayes, noes, and then abstentions.
Okay. Thank you. Proceeding, staff report.
Mr. Mayor Protem and councilmembers, the item before you is consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding for your SPOA, your Police Officers Association, and the City of Sonora. This contract is a four-year contract beginning retroactively from July 1st and good through of 2021, and good through June 30th of 2025. The attached resolution is also there for your review. This contract, we have been meeting quite regularly over the last year, obviously with COVID, but a little bit of damper on some of our negotiations, but we have been meeting quite regularly between the union and the city. One of the major issues that were, that was addressed in this MOU is the ability to ask the employees to share in the cost of medical insurance, and that is addressed. It is also attached, that formula in which COLAs contingent upon contributions of employee health are addressed, it's attached in a table format for your councilmembers' review. A couple of other issues that were addressed in this MOU, the reinstatement of the F-step. F-step was a salary step, merit-based salary step for employees that was taken out, if you will, during the recession as a way to control costs for the city. We have agreed to allow for the reinstatement of the F-step. If you recall from our previous union negotiations with SCA, that was also something that was reauthorized as well. A creation of a dispatch record specialist, one, two positions, so allowing for additional professional development within our dispatchers, and also the creation of two promotional corporal positions. So those positions would not be in addition to, but an ability for current staff to internally promote into those positions. We are still working with the union right now in regards to the job description of those two, of those positions, so those two job descriptions will come back at a later date for approval. That was the item that was pulled, number eight. Some other just basic things are also addressed in the MOU. We increased basic post-academy pay, your bilingual pay, differential pay, relocation allowance, uniform allowance, and a renegotiation of vocational rule. Again, we're really, I want to thank the SPOA union, Thomas Brickley, your officer back there, and Naomi as well, there's Naomi, to allowing us to come to the table to negotiate in good faith, and we believe we've come forth with a, with a good MOU that allows the city to both allow for additional COLAs by also allowing us to have some concessions with health insurance on behalf of the employees. This time I'll entertain any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the city council? Please.
I just have a quick question. Under discussion, the City of Sonora and the Sonora Employees Association have met and have come to an agreement. Should that say?
Is that in the resolution?
It's in the, no, it's in the agenda. Yeah, I mean, it's not, not read part?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, SPOA.
Okay. That's, that was my only question.
Okay. Yeah.
I noted that as well, so.
Yeah.
Well, I would like to thank all parties for what is obviously difficult, and it has been a long negotiation, and I'm glad we have arrived at something that everyone deems fair and that we can live with. These are tough times. So, any public comment on this item? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to the council. Any further comment before voting? Then I'll call the question.
Uh, we're all, move to adopt resolution to 11-15-2021-A, approving the memorandum of understanding for the Sonora Police Officers Association effective July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any nays? Any abstentions? Hearing none, passes unanimously. So, and skipping item eight, we go to number nine, consideration to adopt resolution 11-15-2021-C, approving the employee salary schedules for the Sonora Police Officers Association as part of the 2021 memorandum of understanding. That's just continuing what we discussed.
Exactly. This item has to be done by resolution, so you approve it separately outside of the contract. So it's just reflective of everything that you just approved within that MOU, and it's showing that salary table of what the cost would be for, for the positions within the classification effective July 1, 2021. Every year, we come forward with a new salary table for you to adopt.
Thank you. Any comment before we go to public comment? No. Any public comment? Well, once again, we have a very quiet public, so bring it back to the council.
Then I'll go ahead and move to adopt resolution 11-15-2021-C, approving the employee salary schedule for the Sonora Police Officers Association as part of the 2021 memorandum of understanding.
I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, it passes unanimously. So, and the next one will be a lot more fun. Item 10, consideration to approve the Woods Creek Park project to be funded by the city's allocation under the Parks and Water Bond Act of 2018 per capita grant program. Thank you, Ms. Kellogg.
Thank you. This is a really nice community project, and I see this project getting, starting to move forward. Back in 2019, you guys adopted a resolution authorizing the city to apply for funding under the per capita dollars that are available to the city. This is not a competitive grant application. This is an allocation that the city received from the state through the California Drought Water Parks Climate Coastal Protection and Outdoor Access for All Act of 2018 under Prop 68. So each city and county received an allocation. Originally, the allocation was supposed to be no minimum, no less than $201,000, I believe. However, they made an adjustment, and so the actual amount available to the city for a project is $177,952. They had, we could pass the resolution, then about six months later, we were supposed to submit an application. They delayed everything, they postponed everything because of COVID for about a year. And then we had a meeting with them, they did a Zoom meeting with all the jurisdictions, and so now applications are due on or before December 31st. And so we are moving forward to get our application in for the projects that you see below. It does have to be for recreational purpose, the park does, and it has certain criteria that it has to meet. And so we have four items. We're looking at the, we're calling this the Woods Creek Park Project, and it does serve a recreational purpose. That park, of course, has the baseball field. We also have the playground down there. And so we're looking at actually, as under this project, actually asking, adding a basketball court down there for some of the older kids to, again, make it more user-friendly to families, encouraging families to be down there to utilize the park. And so that does, is a new use and a new recreational use down at the park. We evaluate, we met with public works, we also met with a couple contractors out there to take a look at the park to make sure there'd be no issue, and we can easily accommodate the basketball court adjacent to the base, between the baseball field and the bathrooms in that location. So that is one of the projects that are proposed here to utilize the funds. We also are looking at removing a replacement of the shade structure. If you've been down there, it's pretty dry rotted, it needs to come down, so we're going to look at pulling that structure down and replacing it with an alternative shade structure. And then we're going to also replace the surfacing under the place, playground. That surfacing that was put in was put in with our last per capita funds that we see, oh, excuse me, that we received, and it's time for it to be replaced. So we've included that as part of the project as well, and then including some lighting and benches as part of the overall project. So the, we reviewed this with the state to make sure that there were no issues with these proposed projects, or this one project with these elements, and they were perfectly fine with it. They said it was a great project and a good location, so we were good to move forward to submit an application. So we brought this forward for you guys tonight to show you what's proposed and make sure that you guys have any opportunity to provide any comment before we move forward with our application submittal, which will be signed by the city administrator. You guys have already approved that.
Thank you very much. I have no questions at this point.
They look like great improvements, and I know that the new basketball court will be, you know, I'm sure, well-used. What a great idea. Yeah.
Well, I think, and a little bit of additional lighting will also be welcome, making it a little friendlier in the evening. So, thank you very much. Do I have any public comment on this great project? Not seeing any. I bring it back to the council. So...
I will move to approve the Woods Creek Park project to be funded by the city's allocation under Parks and Water Bond Act of 2018 per capita grant program.
I'll second.
Thank you. You can do it again if you want, but we heard you second.
I'll second again.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No, it passes unanimously again, and it well should for such a great project. Thank you, Ms. Kellogg. Item 12 is receive an additional, an informational report and provide staff direction regarding issues relating to trash bins and dumpsters in the downtown area.
Thank you. You know, we've had some discussions with you about this issue, and I know you guys have probably received some complaint phone calls, because I know we have here at City Hall, on the fact that trash bins are being stored on the sidewalk. We also have received complaints about trash dumpsters in parking spaces on Stewart Street. So we took a look at it, and we've had, we also had a meeting with Waste Management, and Mary Rose and I met with them. I reached out to some of the businesses to talk to them a little bit about options and reasonings as to why this has become such an issue here as late, up late. I think part of the issue is the size of trash bins that we have now. They have to be brought out basically on the street. Everything's automated, so they bring them out on the street to have them dump, and then some of them don't necessarily, they want to bring them back because of the size of them into their businesses, or they don't have space to store them because of their size. I will be real honest, there's probably not a good answer, and we wanted to bring this forward to you, and Mary Rose might want to chime in, too. We just, we need some direction and support from the council because we have provided three options. I'll go over those, and then we also included some pictures as to what we're dealing with. This is all on Stewart Street.
And Green Street.
You do have some issues on Green Street. Most of the bins, though, are being stored behind the businesses, pretty much on property, and there's not sidewalk, a sidewalk, and then... And there's not sidewalk, a sidewalk and then parking on Green Street, so it's not such an issue. We do have some sidewalk, but not as much. But it does occur on Green Street as well. Like I said, there is no easy answer, but we are asking you to consider possibly three options. We also, if anybody has something from the public or you guys, ideas that you guys might have, we certainly are willing to hear that as well as we start moving forward. The first one is not allowing trash bins or dumpsters to be stored on public sidewalks or parking spaces, period. So they, the businesses would have to figure out where they are going to store them, and they can't be on any basically public space. Allowing trash bins on the sidewalks as long as a minimum of three feet clearance can be maintained, and that they can't be, can't impact our ADA ramps on the sidewalk.
So I'll just chime in there. The, sorry, the, the trash bins that we're, we're seeing right now, most of them, ninety percent of them, impact the ADA accessibility when they're left on the sidewalk. There is not a three-foot clearance, and we have seen a fair number of them impact, directly impacting the ADA ramps. And so that's the biggest issue that we're seeing. Not, obviously, there's an unsightly issue with dumpsters impacting our downtown area and taking up parking spaces, but from a risk issue, you do have dumpster, or trash bins, rather, that are on city sides, sidewalks, that are impeding upon an ADA accessibility of that, of our sidewalks.
And the final suggestion that we had for you, for your consideration and direction is working with Waste Management to establish a couple locations in the downtown where businesses can actually haul their gap, their trash to a centralized location. We would have maybe in a parking lot. The fire chief recommended the parking lot over at Mihon, an area in that, Mihon and Stewart Street, which is right behind Embers. There's that two-level parking area as possible location, but they would literally have to, the businesses would have to take their trash over and dump it into that dumpster. We'd have to figure out some type of a cost and how that would be allocated and, and work with Waste Management and all that. So that would be a process, but that is an idea that came up. A couple of the businesses I talked to said that they would be supportive of that, but they would have to haul it. Yep. The one issue is, like, for the restaurants, you know, they're probably going to put, like, a truck or something behind their business to load up during the day and keep it there and then haul it over. So we're going to, we'd have to work through some of those issues and to make this work. But those are the three that, that staff came up with, the three, and we did talk to Waste Management about all of these issues. We talked to the businesses that really have been impacting sidewalks and parking, and, you know, we're just trying to work through it, and we're trying to be pro-business yet realistic on what can be done. And like I said, when we start, there's not really a perfect answer, but we wanted some direction because we, we're going to need your support moving forward on, and with your direction. So those are, that's what I have, and I don't know if Mary Rose has anything else to add, but...
I will just add, this issue really came to a head when we started noticing multiple businesses ordering, ordering dumpsters right outside their place of business or just a couple of businesses down from them, and parking dumpsters. We had about, what, three or four dumpsters right there on Stewart Street?
Yeah, three, yeah.
And, you know, Rochelle and I had spoken that, in general, the city has to approve dumpsters before they're placed on, you know, city streets. And with a change of, you know, Waste Management personnel, they had not realized that. So the dumpsters have been removed. So now those businesses do have the trash bins, but the trash bins are staying out, you know, twenty-four, seven of the time, and they are impeding the sidewalk. So we are, it's, like Rochelle said, there's really not an easy answer. We're trying to ensure that we are pro-business as much as we can. We know that the, it's hard in the downtown area, but we do have the ADA accessibility issues. And then we also have just the aesthetics of downtown, and then the taking of the parking spots as well when they are being utilized by dumpsters and trash bins.
I will tell you that Waste Management on Stewart Street is will, is willing to work with the city on more pickups during the week to help with keeping that maybe a smaller dumpster size. That's what they're doing with Flappy's Pizza. They took away the, the dumpster that got placed out in the parking, and they put smaller bins that are, but they're on the sidewalk, but they did put smaller bins. So, again, we, they are willing to work with us some, but mainly just along Stewart Street. They don't want to do the whole downtown, and they are willing to possibly do a hand pickup on Stewart Street so that they don't all have to be put out on, into the parking spaces for pickup with the automated system.
Thank you very much. Please call it.
So this is a relatively new problem?
We haven't seen it to this extent.
Do you think it has to do with all the to-go food, food because of COVID and people, there's just more garbage?
Yeah, it's regular retail as well.
It is.
Like the flower shop has a small dumpster, and, but it is mainly the restaurants where you see the bigger ones behind because they have a lot more trash. But, yeah, it just seems like it has totally got out of hand over the last, I don't know, five, six months.
And just one more question. If, if we said no trash cans left outside, I mean, obviously, they can't be on the sidewalks. I mean, that's, that's, that doesn't feel negotiable with ADA requirements, but do restaurants have a place to move those indoors?
Some of, some of them do, and some of them don't. And that might be some of the issue too, in that some of the restaurants that are, you know, that are restaurants now, maybe they weren't restaurants in the past. And so the older ones probably had maybe an offsite, you know, someplace where they could pull their dumpsters in or pull their garbage in. And then these other locations, maybe not so much. So they just don't have a lot of private area. And there are some fire requirements. I don't know if Amy wants to address that at all as far as how close you can have a dumpster with garbage in it. So we have, we also have to look at that as well because some certain sizes they can bring into the business if they wanted to.
Yeah, so the, the fire code on the size of dumpsters, the small trash bins aren't included in the fire code for that size, but anything over five cubic feet, which is larger dumpsters, they have to be a minimum of five feet away from the building or have some kind of a non-combustible separation or be sprinkled. So it really puts in a damper to what's allowed and what can be, be up close next to the buildings. Just because if, if somebody does start in, in the trash can, the plastic lids burn away fast, and then it has access up into the building and can catch the building on fire.
So, non-flammable, like cement, cinder block?
So...
Not, not like an enclosure that'd be wood or composite?
So the, the fire code says it either has to be five feet away or sprinkler. The building official and myself met for, like, the, the issue, the new enclosure that went in at the Hotel Lumberjack. They're putting in a trash can enclosure. It's not sprinkled, and it is up against the building, but we required a two-hour separation because the intent of the code is to have some, some type of either distance or fire sprinklers. And since the hotel is not fire sprinkled, we allowed for an exemption or exception, allowing that two-hour fire, firewall.
Firewall.
And then that way, if the dumpster, it's actually made out of steel, the enclosure. So if the dumpster does catch on fire, it's going to be contained and not spread into the, into the business. But again, that's an added cost as well.
Sure.
To the business owners.
Thank you, Chief New.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to ask you, you mentioned Waste Management doing in-house pickup, so they would actually send a guy in to pick up the trash if that was an option?
No, they would, but they would do manual pickup.
Oh, manually?
They probably would still put them out on the sidewalk, but they wouldn't have to put them out in the parking spaces right now. I know, I don't know about you guys, but like here at City Hall, if we don't almost have those in the street, they drive by and they won't even stop.
Right.
So that, you know, they would still, but they could do smaller ones, and then they would manually pick them up, and they do possibly a daily. We'd have to work with Waste Management, but, but they would still have bins. They just would be smaller. And I will tell you that they verify Diamondback with their dumpster, as well as Flappy's Pizza. They get daily pickups right now, even with the dumpster.
Oh, wow.
Those three trash bins. They're getting daily pickups.
So in the Diamondback, it looks like they have theirs in a red zone.
They do have it in a red zone, and it's been there for many, many, many years. Jerry confirmed that. They used to pull it into their business, but then they couldn't get it over the curb anymore. And then, like Amy said, they, the fire code wouldn't allow that dumpster to be placed inside the building.
And, and daily?
So, thank you. I did have one question as well, and that is, how many businesses or percentage of businesses is, is this a problem for?
Well, on, on Stewart Street, I'd say probably a minimum of ten. And then Green Street, there are a few areas on Green Street, and there's probably a good seven or eight on that side as well.
Okay, thank, thank you.
The brewery, we have an issue with it, you know, they, so we just need to come up with some type of a policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion?
Not at this point. I want to hear what the public first.
Okay. And?
I am interested in, in polling the, the businesses about a centralized dumping area because it could be really rather painful to have to haul trash to downtown. Centralized dumping area.
And do I have any public comment on this interesting, impressing issue? Not seeing any. Bring it back to the council.
I thought we would have some.
Would have expected and actually hoped for some.
Well, so in my opinion, obviously, that having them on the sidewalk is, is, is a problem, and that, we can't do that. At least from the pictures that I've seen. I don't know if there's any sidewalks in, in these locations where you can get three feet of clearance because I don't think the sidewalks, half of them aren't even probably three feet.
Especially three feet themselves, yes.
So the concept of having someone, like, in the block between Lenenburg and Bradford, hauling their trash all the way up to the Mihun parking lot is problematic. I can't see them making a lot of trips with a lot of garbage all the time that far. To me, the, the, one solution could be having, and it would be, well, and, and the other thing that I, I really don't like to, wouldn't want to see is, is having people park their, their pickups there and put garbage in the back of the pickup. I mean, you can't put it in, you won't be able to put it in a dumpster in the back of the pickup because they're not going to take it back down and back out. So it's going to get loose. It's going to smell. It's, to basically have someone with a lot of garbage in the back of the pickup, right there, uncontrolled, really, where people are walking by and hopefully going to the nearby restaurant to eat, and that's not exactly appetizing to walk by there. So I, I think, to me, a solution that I was thinking of would be, and I know everyone hates to take away parking spots, but to have a dedicated parking enclosure, parking spot, one, just one per block, that they would end up sharing, that the businesses in that block would end up sharing, and have an enclosure that's built and obviously has to be five feet away from, from the building wherever it's in front of for fire safety. And, and so we have some sort of enclosure, some sort of, I, I would, I would think you could fit two, you could probably fit two dumpsters in a parking spot enclosure. And then when Waste Management comes by, they could open the front part of the enclosure and, and do their dumping, and the, 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 the business owners would be able to un-open the back or the, toward the business, toward the sidewalk end of it, and be able to put their garbage in. So they're not carrying it long distance, and it still has quite a bit of volume, but it's not, they're not carrying it long distance, like, from two or three blocks away. We avoid the open containers in the back of pickups. Something along those lines was what I was thinking.
Would the size of the trucks prohibit doing something similar like that in the public parking lots? For instance, one, you know, one at Stewart and Lyons, one at the, the, well, it's not very...
You know how they, they do. When they come residential, they've got this big arm.
Yeah, no, I know exactly how they do it. That's why I'm asking if it would prohibit, be prohibitive.
Yeah, I would think doing it in a parking lot would be prohibitive to do that, so. Unless they actually, you had somebody from Waste Management weeded out of that parking lot, so. I would think it'd be easier to do it having inline parking spot used for that rather than take away from the parking lots.
Well, especially since right now, the red behind Diamondback should be opened up anyway, just as long as we're going to keep lineup closed. It's not really functional as a turn.
It's also in the red zone. That prob, those, those parking spots can be realigned.
Right.
I sort of imagined in the pickup trucks that you would, they would have not just open garbage, but they would, it would have garbage cans in the back of their pickup truck, which is a little bit, little bit different. I mean, I, I don't know. There aren't, there aren't any really good solutions that, that I see here.
Well...
Thanks a lot.
That's, that's why they're bringing it to us.
Normally, we try to come to you guys with a good solution, but this one was one of those that there, we needed some direction because somebody's not going to be happy no matter what direction we go, so we needed your guys' support on that.
Oh, yeah, and we have to think about the other businesses in town too that, you know, don't exactly want to have dumpsters at their back door, you know, if they're, you know, adjacent to the business that's producing a lot of garbage. I mean, it detracts from other businesses as well. It's not just...
Well, just from the whole ambiance of the town to some degree.
Yeah, exactly.
Jim, I really like your idea of some dedicated spots, but we have to consider, if they're having this dump daily at Diamondback and another place, that's a lot of trash. That's not going to go into the back of a pickup easily and then be transported. So I think something like your solution long-term for at least these things, these dumpsters being used so heavily is probably something we ought to work at, but...
Yeah, and I think it should be, you know, reserved basically for the high-volume, high vol, yeah, high-volume garbage used, users, I guess is a good term.
But we want them using it.
And not just on every block in, in the downtown, or not every block in, you know, in any kind of commercial area, but only for the high-volume areas.
But we also want them using it because we don't want food spoiling outside for very long.
If there was some sort of built structure, I would actually prefer that they be in either parking lots and not just in back of businesses. Or at least on the other side of the road by the parking lot on Stewart. I don't know.
Okay, well, let's see. I'm going to venture my rather conservative opinion here that going with two for the time being item or proposal to allowing trash bins on sidewalks, just maintaining the ADA would is probably where we would want to start, and then consider this going forward, and, I mean, poll some of our businesses. I'm really unfamiliar with trash collection, and being that I was absent until this weekend, I haven't had a chance to talk to anybody about this or didn't even know it was coming forward. So I would suggest that we start with sort of the minimum, get our sidewalks safe for ADA passage, and then study it further.
This, this was really helpful, actually, because the fact that you guys are willing to give up parking to, and maybe more than just one central area. I agree with you. I, I think you're going to have people who just, we're going to have the same issue because they don't want to carry it two or three blocks. I agree with you. I, I think you're going to have people who just, we're going to have the same issue because they don't want to carry it two or three blocks.
Yeah, they're, they're not going to do that.
They're going to have a vehicle behind there full of garbage bags, which was what Flappy had before he got the dumpster.
Yeah.
And he sent us a picture of it and said, this is what I'm dealing with. But the idea that we might be able to lose some parking, what staff can do then is we can identify some locations for you guys. We can also look at some designs, and we can work with the businesses and say, this is what we're looking at. And then we can come back with actually maybe a good proposal. This was really helpful. I don't know if there's, but we can look at areas that maybe won't impact other businesses, like you said. Don't have it right behind somebody's business so they have to smell all the restaurant garbage and then have them centralized. And then you're, we're going, I'm assuming you would want whoever's participating in this to pay a fee, correct? Because the city.
Well, it is using city property.
Yeah, the city would have to pay for it, so.
Unfortunately, it's the cost to do your business.
Participate, and we probably look at some kind of locking system that they would have access to for each of the individual dumpsters so that they can have access. So, I think this is really helpful tonight to, because we just weren't sure where this was.
And you know, to Collette's point about the parking lots, you know, discussions with Waste Management could, you know, maybe that might be the better place is not right in the street.
Yeah.
And actually in a parking lot, if we can, you know, console Waste Management to be able to go pick it out of the parking lot and roll it down. Or, you know, however it's situated, so it's not.
And take a look at Green Street, you guys. Really look at it with an open, with this in mind.
No parking lots on Green Street. Well, not many, anyway.
You will see, there must be fifty if there's one trash bin along that street.
Yeah.
From here down to Stockton Street. So aesthetically, more than anything on that side, maybe we could get some, something in that area too that might benefit the businesses that we can work with them so that we can get some of that off the street as well.
Yeah.
And then when pickup day happens, we won't have a bunch of trash bins out in the middle of the street as well. Well, wait until they open up to get them back in.
You know, I hesitate to say this because I think, I don't want this to end on a, I don't want everyone to groan at me, but I also wonder just about some education about reducing the amounts of garbage, you know, if there's a way to incorporate that instead of just providing more garbage space. I mean, you know, I produce probably half the amount of garbage I produced ten years ago, so.
But I would assume too that this is a, this isn't a either or. This is, we're going to provide you with this location, and guess what? You don't get to have any storage of your garbage on any public right of way or any public space once this is set up.
Yep.
Because otherwise you'll have both.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going forward, I'm embarrassingly a little weak on this. Do I ask for Ms. Kellogg to come back for the Community Development Department report, or just?
No, just.
Nope. Yeah, no, just if there's any council members that have any questions considering monthly reports, otherwise they don't individually speak.
So, okay. Community Development Department report, any questions or interest? Well, lots of interest. Chief New, anything further from the Fire Department? Thank you. And Public Works report.
So, just, sorry, Mr. Bear, so there's a difference between monthly reports and your department head reports? So collectively, you can ask if, if they have any questions, and then you can go down to the department head reports, which is a little bit different.
Thank you. What a great place to be learning. Okay. And from our Chief of Police, Chief VanderWiel.
So, again, this is for the department head reports. This isn't the monthly report, right?
So, I'm, like I said, embarrassed.
You can come up true. I'm just, I'm just letting you know, he was, he was referencing monthly reports, but I think he's actually asking for department head reports.
Well, yes, we should be at that point now.
Yeah.
Wherever you need me.
Call of Duty.
I was just going to follow up a little bit on what we mentioned last time. The Faith Hamilton Senior Project was a pretty successful one for Saturday night. She raised a little over thirty-two thousand dollars for the cause. So, that was a very nice effort on both hers and obviously the community's part. We're very appreciative of that. And then we have a Coffee with a Cop this Wednesday from nine to eleven at the local collective. That's the newer little shop down there by the stoplight. It actually has a nice little coffee shop in the back portion of it, so. Pottery, the old, it used to be the pottery.
Used to be Palace Meat Market.
Didn't that have your grandfather's?
One A, isn't it? One eighty-nine South Washington, right?
I just remember Mr. Garaventa being along there. But I never made it past the ice cream.
If it was, it's the same place where Out of Hand was? Pink Zebra? That's it.
Wednesday, we can.
So, I know, so I, so I, so I know that location. When is it?
Wednesday from nine to eleven.
Wednesday.
I hope you can get a lot of the public out, and I look forward to being able to attend myself.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, now that I've blown this, there's no point in calling for Amy, well, Chief New again?
So, so just so we're all clear, let's just see if there, just ask for comments on any monthly reports thirteen through sixteen. And if there's no comments from, from the council, then we would move to department head reports, and then we'll just finish that.
Thank you. So, are there any comments on the monthly reports from our department heads? Seeing none, we'll move on. Except Chief VanderWiel's report. So, council member and department head reports.
You missed Chris.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I was, no, I'm very new at the.
You started to go to council member, and I thought you were just going to do the council members and forgetting the rest, and now I see what you're saying. Sorry.
Mr. Gorski, have you anything to report to us this evening? Thank you very much. Coming back to, circling back to the council.
I don't have anything to report out either as a department.
Oh, gracious. Rochelle, please.
Sorry, I was confused, sorry.
Yeah, well, obviously I am too.
So, this is important because Kim reminded me that next week is Thanksgiving. So, next week is the Christmas parade, so we are, we are getting all geared up and ready to go. Applications are coming in, and we're going to have a parade this year. So, I think it's coming together well, and we'll have three announcing stands. They'll all be manned by the radio station. We've got Santa under contract. He'll be at Courthouse Park. We're working with him with the Snore Chamber. We'll have the same Santa. And our regular Santa will be in the Christmas parade, but he won't be down at Courthouse Park this year. But we are, we're going to have Christmas next year. They got the tree up at the Red Church. And as soon as those banners arrive, hopefully they're here shortly, they'll be going up. And we won't have wreaths, but at least we'll have banners this year for downtown. So, anyway, we are moving forward, and before we know it, it'll be Christmas.
Thank you for all the work that you've put into this.
And no problem. It's kind of nice to see events start coming back. We got to do magic and now the Christmas parade, so I think the public are glad to start seeing that stuff come back, so. And we will be safe. All, all participants are required to wear a mask, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
And parade starts at?
Six P M.
Six P M.
At the Red Church on the twenty-sixth, for those of you that don't know, the day after Thanksgiving. Anybody who wants to come out and help, we'll put you to work. I'm short a couple of people this year, so my family are, they're moving on off, so. Thanks.
Thank you. So, having heard from our city administrator, our esteemed city council, anything further?
Nothing more tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sagerstrom.
I attended the National Christmas Tree Reception, which was just really tremendous and a great community event, and assisted with the Christmas Town Committee handing out bells, and the kids really loved that. It was, it was just really wonderful to see the town turn out and just be kind of joyous with this giant tree. We, the Energy Action Committee is, we've kind of, we've kind of arranged an, a Title Twenty-four event. So, I'll be interested in what happens in our next council meeting. We have him set up for January tenth, but perhaps he will be further down the road. So, and then the Yes Partnership, there was a presentation by the Sheriff's Office on online activity and, you know, for, for young, young, young people and online safety. And the going, growing, really a growing presence of toxic things happening on the internet. And they have quite a program set up at the Sheriff's Office to help, help dissolve that among the county youth. And, and they'll be having, the Yes Partnership will be having a fundraising lunch on December sixteenth, drive-through. So, that, tickets are available on their website, yespartnership.org. That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Sutch.
Excuse me. On, on the fourth, I attended the Tolma County Commission on Homelessness. That's, I think, a really smart group and dealing with a very difficult issue. And I'm happy to be part of that. I also could, can sit on a couple of subcommittees of that committee. And on the fifth, I attended the ATFA Board Meeting. On the eighth, last Monday, we had social equity, and Jim, I'm really sorry, I know you had to go to LaFco. LaFco, I never can remember that, but we had actually a great meeting. You know, they're, they're sometimes difficult, and this one, we just worked seamlessly as a group. And I actually received more than one compliment about just how the group really seemed to be working on a shared outcome. On the tenth, I attended Tolma County Transportation Council, which Jim chairs, so I'll let him speak about it more. But I was sort of intrigued by, I think Caltrans talked about Adopt a Highway. And if you, if you participate in that, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month stipend. And I thought maybe the council could think about adopting a certain stretch of the highway. It's, I think, a two-mile stretch at some point when we think we have a lot more time on our hands. And just a lot of sort of interesting, interesting things going on. Also, last week was drowsy, drowsy driving week, which I didn't ever know existed. But drowsy driving is considered the equivalent of driving under the influence. It certainly is as dangerous. So, anyhow, and this morning I had coffee, a really leisurely coffee with Chief VanderWiel. It was a, you know, lovely time, just sort of reacquainting and seeing how, just seeing what's going on in each other's lives. So, I was really grateful for that. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Garaventa.
Okay, so, actually, I did see part of the campaign for the drowsy driving because I had to drive to the Bay Area and back last night. And every message sign between here and there, don't drive drowsy, you know, have a, take a rest or something like, there was a slogan. So, it was kind of interesting that when they discussed that at the, at the meeting, that, that that was all over the place as you go down on the freeways in the Bay and in between. Trying to look up here, trying to remember some of the stuff that we did at Transportation Council. You mentioned that also, I tend, on the same day, also attended the Solid Waste and got actually two versions of the Adopt a Highway program for, from different people from Caltrans. And so, yeah, they are looking for people who are willing to volunteer and, and their, their group will, you, you sign up for a two-mile section of, of highway, and, and your group gets two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month as a kicker to help your organization out. It used to be the other way around. You almost had to pay for it to, to, to get the sign that says, you're, you know, Adopt a Highway. But it's all part of the, the new Clean California campaign that, that's come out through Caltrans.
Thank you for representing me at LaFco.
Oh, and again, in LaFco, yeah, there, there was the, a long discussion on the Groveland Municipal Service Review, which is, we all, all the agencies, including the City of Sonora, has, have a municipal service review that goes through LaFco, which is the Local Area Formation Commission. And it's a, you do it every five years or so. And unfortunately, GCSD had some issues that they were talking about, possible raising of taxes for fire or for services. So, the Municipal Service Review got kind of melded into the, the discussion on, on the MSR and, which really wasn't the same thing. It wasn't really relative. It was something completely different. MSR is basically, is, are, is your special district doing its job? Do you need to expand your sphere of influence? Do you, you know, what, what needs to change or if anything needs to change? So, that, that was actually quite a long meeting, so. And on Zoom. It was actually held in, in Groveland physically and then on Zoom. And I'm going to get out of that because I can't remember what else we talked about. We just basically did some budgeting approval at a Transportation Council. It was actually a fairly short meeting, or light meeting. And then, of course, there was the Solid Waste Committee. The main, the main discussion is illegal dumping and how to, how to fight it. One pile at a time is attending these meetings, and actually, we added two new people, two people at large, or about to add, recommended two people that the board will put on. One is, one of the persons is from one pile at a time. And we discussed the effectiveness, legalities and effectiveness of having cameras and how they could be enforced. The sheriff was there, the district attorney was there, the co-compliance officer was there. And how, and then also a gentleman that works for, is an advocate for illegal, not for illegal dumping, to curb illegal dumping for the state of California, is also works for RCRC Rural, Rural Council, Regional County of Rural Counties. And, and so there's a widespread discussion about how, how cameras can work, how effective they can be, the enforceability and all that kind of stuff. So, we're kind of working on that as well, so.
I just had a question about the Adopt a Highway. I mean, you're, when you adopt that portion of the highway, you're responsible for keeping it clean, right?
Yeah, I don't know how often they require you to go out. It was said, I want to say.
They pay you two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month and don't monitor?
Oh, I'm sure they monitor. If you're not doing it, you know, they're not going to pay you. I think it's every other week minimum. It may be every week minimum. It may, yeah, they said, and I just don't remember it right offhand. But, um, yeah, you have to, you can't just sign up for it, get the money and not do anything. There's, there's, there's a minimum requirement that you have to go out.
Just imagining myself with a little stick with a nail.
Yeah, yeah, no. And, you know, if it doesn't get done, I mean, you know, I mean, there has to be, you have to have a pretty good sizable group.
And I was just.
And be safe. I mean, they provide all the safety, you know, the hel, the helmet, the, the jacket and all that stuff.
Yeah, really cool. But I also was going to mention to Mary Rose because I tried to click on the City of Star website, the different governmental agencies, and I clicked on LaFco and it didn't, didn't connect, it didn't pull up. I didn't try the other ones. But there, there's some missing links there.
Is that it? Thank you very much. Outside of being thrilled to be home, I have nothing to report. And how do I do this so I don't screw it up? Do I adjourn the regular open meeting and reconvene into, okay. So, with that, I would like to adjourn our open session. So with that, I would like to adjourn our open session for the city council meeting and reconvene into closed session. To report out from our closed session, uh, direction was given to staff. And Mary Rose, our city administrator will be leaving and leaving her employ with the city. And Mary Rose, what new opportunity do you have? And would you share it with us and our community? Because we're going to miss you. You've done a great job here.
Yeah, I'm going to miss the city greatly. I'm really thankful to the city council for all the opportunity. I have accepted an offer with, um, the Peace Corps, United States Peace Corps. I will be the Director, um, of Management and Operations for Peace Corps Africa Region, stationed in the U S Embassy in Cameroon, Africa.
Wow, wow. It's hard to compete with that. Thank you for the time that you've given us here at the city. And, uh, we still have two more months to work with you. So, thank you. And with that, I'd like to adjourn our city council.